Good evening, everyone. It is 6:01. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, and I am going to do roll. I'll start with Councilwoman Loy. Councilwoman Kestie. Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Here.
And Councilwoman Cock, are you online?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca.
Present.
All right, thank you all. So approval of the agenda, which will include an executive session, and then after we have closed, after the adjournment, we will do a closed session. So do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilwoman Lavaca. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda, items one through six. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns and seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Tonight, we actually have two presentations, and up first is Family Promise, and I believe, Audra, are you going to be giving the presentation?
Yes, and I'm waiting for Raymond to be there any time.
Okay. So do you want to maybe just wait a minute, and we can actually have the Office of the Washington State Auditor go first? Is that okay?
That's okay.
All right. And is she here? Kelly, is she online?
They're online.
Okay. All right, my apologies. This is Deana, is that who I'm looking at?
Yes.
Oh, hello, Deana. I'm Mayor Johnson, welcome, and we'll just let you move forward with the presentation if you're ready.
Perfect. Really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and present tonight. We did provide a PowerPoint presentation, is that able to be seen or shared?
It looks like it's coming up. Yes, there it is.
Perfect. Thank you. And then my team, I believe, is also here, Suzanne Hancock and David Holcombe, so we will be sharing presentation duties today. And then the last thing I'll say, logistically, in addition to the PowerPoint, which will be our focus, we did email ahead of time a packet of information, including draft policies that I believe is in your packet. So we may reference where that is and our page numbers, if you have that and want to follow along there. So as was introduced, we are here representing the Office of the Washington State Auditor, serving tonight's meeting as the exit conference, so to speak about the audit that we completed back in June. So we will go ahead and talk through what the audit performed and the results that we want to bring forward, and then open up at the end for any questions or any additional details we can provide that would be helpful. So we'll go to the next slide. Perfect. So at the exit conference, we are talking about the results of the audit, and we recognize that those have impact, that they matter, whether it's tightening of controls internally or a message externally to your citizens to let them know the validation of the controls that are in place. So it's very important to us that we start our meetings by talking about our intention and what's important to us in our interactions, and you can see those three goals on the screen. The first is that the Washington State Auditor's vision is an increased trust in government. In our position, we see a lot of good in government and take really seriously our ability to tell that story, again, to validate that controls are in place, that safeguards are happening, or to identify where there are recommendations or controls that could be increased, and making all of that information public. While we are independent, we want to make sure that everything we do is very transparent. And so that's not only in our day-to-day interactions with the staff that we work with, but also in meetings like this. We want to make sure that if there are any questions, that we're addressing those, providing the helpful information, but also to citizens. All of our reports are published on our website, we operate a citizen hotline where they can submit questions or requests for us to look into different information. So there's a lot that we're doing to try and make sure that people are aware of our audit process and can feel engaged with it where they should choose. The last goal that I'll speak about is our improved efficiency and effectiveness of government. We see that happening very collaboratively with governments, so any of the tone of our reviews, any recommendations, are very much made to support the efforts that you and the staff that you represent are making. We are not authoritative, we are not coming in and being adversarial, we very much want to help, and so whether that are, as I said, recommendations in the audit, passing on information of what we're seeing statewide, or even providing resources. On the next slide, one of our divisions of our office is called the Center for Government Innovation. Oh, what, there you go, thank you. So while the audit process that we're mostly going to speak about tonight talks about a year that was completed and the actions that were already completed, our Center for Government Innovation is really focused on things you may be facing right now or coming forward in the future, system conversions or changes in your payroll process, whatever it may be. We've put a lot of effort into having different narrative guides, cash-receiving trainings, you can see there's a whole cybersecurity suite because we recognize that is a common risk or an area that a lot of governments are facing, just really trying to put quite a bit out there that isn't just based on the financial statements that we might be reviewing. So definitely recommend you and the staff that are attending today, consider looking in that resource library to see if there's something that might be helpful there. At this point, I want to conclude my introduction and hand it over to David Holcombe, who is the Audit Lead, to talk about the audit that he and his team performed.
Hello. First, we would like to thank the city officials for their contributions during the audit. Very specifically, we'd like to thank Kelly for her assistance and timely communication. The open and transparent communication really contributed to the overall success of this audit. Next slide, please. Now, if you're following along in the packet that we provided, the results, the accountability results are on page seven. We conducted an accountability audit covering two years for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. The purpose of an accountability audit is to determine if the city complied with state laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, and its own policies and procedures. Our audit also looks at the city's controls and if they are adequate to safeguard public resources. Now, we cannot look at all of the city's activity over the two years, so we perform a number of planning procedures and use a risk-based approach to select areas for further testing. Now, we are happy to announce in those selected areas, the city's operations complied in all material respects with applicable state laws, regulations, its own policies, and provided adequate controls over safeguarding public resources. Next slide, please. Now, there are two areas, the first two areas on this slide I would like to review in depth. First, accounts payable. Specifically, we looked at credit cards and electronic funds transfers. Now, we selected credit cards because accounts payable is a significant system, and we've seen more credit card activity statewide, so we wanted to get a good understanding of the city's processes and controls around credit card transactions. Similarly, statewide, we are seeing a lot of electronic funds transfers and attempts from external parties on state and local governments to misappropriate funds. So we are bringing up this conversation everywhere, and we wanted to look at the city's processes and controls. Now, we had no significant recommendations in either of these areas. Now, the second area I'd like to address is payroll, specifically bonus and incentive payments. Now, this really wasn't an extension of our federal compliance work. The city used federal funds to ford the retention of first responders such as police officers and firefighters. In addition to our compliance work, we wanted to make sure the city met the allowable criteria under Washington state law, and again, there were no issues or recommendations. And the last two bullets there, with all of our audits, we review open public meetings and financial conditions, we noted no concerns. Next slide, please. So with our, in the packet, if you're following along, the results for the financial statement audit are on page 14, and they continue to page 19. Now, we conducted a one-year financial statement audit for fiscal year 2023. The objective of a financial statement audit is to issue an opinion as to whether the information included in the financial statements can be relied upon to make decisions. Now, we are pleased to report we are issuing an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. This is the opinion you want to receive, it provides assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct. We are reporting an adverse opinion on U.S. GAAP standards, but this is normal for cash-based entities. All this is stating is the city is reporting their financial statements using the prescribed BARS cash manual and is not reporting on GAAP standards, which is allowable under state law. We conduct our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, and these standards require us to report if we found any deficiencies in internal controls or the process the city goes through to prepare the financial statements for audit. We did not identify any concerns. Audit standards also require us to consider the compliance with state laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, where noncompliance could affect the fair presentation of the financial statements, and again, we noted no concerns. Next slide, please. Lastly, there are two more areas auditing standards require us to communicate. First, we did not identify any material misstatements. We also, there were no uncorrected misstatements identified as well. Secondly, the standards require us to consider the potential for management override of controls, and we addressed this by testing journal entries, and again, we didn't have any concerns. Next slide, please. Now, the last area we'd like to highlight is the new auditing standard applicable to fiscal year 2023, which is related to subscription-based IT contracts. Well, there was no significant impact to the financial statements or to the city, we wanted to highlight the city did a great job identifying the applicable contracts. Next slide, please. All right, moving on to the federal grant compliance audit, these results are on page 20 of your packet, if you're following along. We conducted a federal compliance audit, a single audit, for the period covering fiscal, covering the fiscal 2023 expenditures. The objective of this audit is to determine if the city materially complied with the requirements of receiving federal funding. The program we selected for review this year was a coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery grant, and as you can see from the slide, this represents a little over 40% of the expenditures in 2023. Next slide, please. Now, with this, we are pleased to report that we are issuing an unmodified opinion on the city's compliance with federal grant requirements. This is, again, this is the opinion you want to receive, it provides assurance that the funds were expended in accordance with their intended purpose and all requirements have been followed. Additionally, it's important to note that auditing, that our audit is conducted in accordance with the uniform guidance. These standards require us to gain an understanding of the city's internal controls or processes that it goes through to ensure that federal requirements are followed. If there were, if we were to identify problems, we would need to bring that to your attention, and as you can see from the slide, we had no concerns. Along with that, there were no material or significant weaknesses in internal controls and no instances of noncompliance. And at this point, I'd like to pause for a moment and ask if there are any questions or anything that I can clarify.
Are there any questions from the council? So, David, it doesn't look like there's any questions.
Okay, at this point, then, I'll pass it over to Suzanne to go over what's next.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm looking for a copy of the slide to see which one we're on. Next steps, we're planning to release the report after this meeting for publication on our public website. Kelly, as our main contact, will receive notification when the report has published. We've also included a link here, if anyone is interested in signing up to receive those notifications. In addition, Deana will be reaching out to Kelly in the next week or so to work with the city to get the federal data collection form certified. As in past years, we'll also send out a survey that will go to Kelly, again, as our main contact, but it's very intentionally in email format to make it easy to forward to other city staff. Just to thank you in advance for anyone willing to participate and provide us with that feedback, we really, really value your thoughts and want to hear about your experience with the audit process. We take your feedback very seriously and are always looking for ways to improve. Next slide, please. We're pleased to report that the cost of our engagement is expected to be within the estimate that we provided at the beginning of the audit, and looking forward, we've included information about the city's next audit. Probably we'll try to schedule around this time of year, but our scheduler will reach out and work with Kelly to find the time that works best for the city. This next audit will not include an accountability audit, and that's because we performed that work every two years. It covers a two-year scope, but it will include a financial and federal compliance audit. We've included an estimated cost in your packet, we try to be very conservative for budgeting purposes when we provide those estimates, and at this point, we're expecting two federal programs to be covered by that compliance audit next year. And that's just based on our conversations with city staff and review of the minutes. We observed that the city had approximately 1.4 million left of the state and local recovery funds left to expend in 2024, and then potentially a new grant for the big road project. Again, we try to be really conservative, this is our best guess at this point, and we'll update our estimate and communicate to the city accordingly if anything changes after we have started our planning procedures next audit cycle. With that, that concludes everything that we wanted to make sure that we addressed. I'd just like to open it back up now for any questions or areas we can clarify with anyone on the board.
Okay, does the council have any questions for Suzanne or for Deana and David? Go ahead.
No, more of a statement. Thank you, Kelly, for working so diligently on this. I had an opportunity to participate a couple of years ago, and it's a really thorough process, and it takes a little while. So thank you for doing that, and it is good to see that we have that report that also shows us kind of an outside party's perspective of our financial statements. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing that. All right, well, Deana, Suzanne, and David, thank you very much for coming this evening, and we appreciate the report. We're especially happy that it's an excellent report, as it always has been with Kelly. So thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Kelly, did you want to make any comments regarding this? Okay, all right. So...
Okay, okay, okay. So, good evening. I'm Audra from Family Promise. Thank you for having me again. Tonight, I'm here to, one, talk about how we've been spending the city funding that we've been receiving, and I will attempt to talk to you about a project that we have going on that Raymond was really going to present on, and I think he had an emergency come up.
Oh, dear, okay.
Anyway, so to start with, I wanted to really just start with a client testimonial of how this funding is in action. So I gave you guys, sent in ahead of time, a little flyer, I hope you guys all got it, and I just wanted to elaborate on the story about Jose, who started in our seasonal shelter, ended up in our shelter program, moved up into second stage, and he ended up with us because he lost his job due to a career change. You know, after the pandemic, there was a lot of places that really just didn't survive, and they had to lay off a lot of employees, and for him, this meant he had to make a whole new career change, learn how to do something new, and that took time. So he did really excellent through all of our programs, his entire family, kind of one of our star pupils, and when he got to, prepared to move into permanent housing, our housing market had then skyrocketed so high that there was no way he would be able to immediately afford housing on his own. So one of the things that Cedro Woolley Funding has allowed us to do is to use a little bit of rental assistance. In this case, it was a little bit more than we typically do, it was $500 a month, but we walked alongside him for five months, paying $500 of his rent, and now he's sustaining his own housing. So he's actually in our third-stage release/lease program, and we will be releasing that lease to him this year. This funding also allowed us to take that risk of being able to open a couple more units. It's always a risk when we're serving clients that are, you know, just getting stabilized, and as a nonprofit, how will we fund that if we can't pay that? So, and part of that, this funding has allowed us to put that initial deposit down and create that security barrier, both for them and for ourselves. And then when they take over the lease, it all works out. So that's just one of our really successful stories that I just wanted to kind of share. They went through the whole, the whole cycle of what Family Promise looks like, so...
Oh, thank you. So then, in 2023, which we just completed our contract, we sent in our last billing, I think about two weeks ago, we used $15,000 for rental assistance, $8,000 went to housing acquisition, and so that money is really for our grant writer and some impact campaign stuff that we have going on that a couple people from the city are on with us, where we're trying to bring some more housing and programming to Cedro Woolley. And then, you guys have all heard about the Promise House, and we're trying to purchase that, and I know that's still sitting on here. We are about to go under contract to pay that down payment. We had the survey done this last week, that took a while to get done, things where we were on like a long waitlist, but we're very excited that we're well underway with that and hope to have a contract in, hopefully, in the next two months. So then, rolling into 2024, we just started funding some of that. We have been able to successfully have the Grace House open due to that, which is allowing us to have four more units in Cedro Woolley. $4,000 of that will again go to the rental acquisition to create more housing for Cedro Woolley residents. And we only have a little bit of rental assistance this year, but what we're finding is many of our guests that have gone through all of our programming are really, all they just need is this really small amount of $150 to $200 when they first move in, and we just come alongside them for a little bit longer, and it makes them feel a little more secure and like they're not alone after spending so long dependent on the system, kind of. So, um, yeah, is there any questions about that so far? I know that's a lot of numbers and things.
Are there any questions for Audra?
I think, I can wait till afterwards.
Okay. So something I just wanted to kind of wrap around is we're serving more numbers because of this, but this is also growing an impact campaign, where we're really looking at what is the future of Family Promise in Cedro Woolley and in Skagit County in general, and even in other counties. So, but this funding is really helping us look at what will we be doing in Cedro Woolley in the future, and wrapping into each part of our impact campaign, which I can share about more if you guys would like, or it's up to you.
Well, I know that you went down and you looked at the tiny homes, or...
I did.
And how did that play out as far as what Family Promise may or may not be doing along those lines?
Yeah, I'm very excited about them. I, actually, I studied tiny homes for quite a long time, and I've stayed in some rickety ones, and I've kind of sampled all that out, and these are very dignified houses. I mean, they are tiny, but they are houses. They have, I mean, I don't have the kind of appliances in my own house that are in these houses, they're very dignified. One unit that I went into in particular down at the Wildwood cottages that are down, I think it's Alder, kind of going into Bellingham, there is a nice living room layout, a full-size bed, or queen bed, I think, in the main bedroom downstairs, and then upstairs, there's, you know, you've got to be kind of tiny, you know, small people. For our kids up there, they have two lofted bedrooms, and then another small little play area in the front of that, where they can go up there and have their time, have their playtime, you could put a little desk in there that they could sit and do homework, and they have their own rooms. And I think it's just so much more dignified for our families that maybe get stuck in services for a long time, and it's not necessarily, group living isn't for everybody, right? And the healing truly begins when they get back into their own housing, so the sooner we can do that, the better, and I think these tiny homes, cottages, really offer that.
And you're looking to do that behind where you're located now, correct?
Yes, so Central United Methodist has, I think it's about an acre, I could be wrong, yeah? And we're working on a price point right now on what that land would look like. I don't know where we're going to get the funding for the land yet, but we could technically fit 10 to 14 units on there. We're doing some data analysis on what size are the families that we're serving right now. I'm thinking we're probably going to go more along the lines of 10 to 12, so we can have a couple bigger units. And then our current third-stage houses, which one we're looking at purchasing, right, they could be for bigger families that definitely would not fit in this kind of model.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Is it, is it that area zoned for the tiny houses, or how does that work?
I think right now, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody probably knows, I believe it's zoned for duplexes, is that R7, is that right? Yeah, I think so. Raymond knows all these, yes, okay, thank you, Nicole. So technically, okay, so on that land, our church is here, Raymond had all these drawings for you guys, I can send them all to you later, but we have the open land, and then Habitat for Humanity already has four duplexes on that property. And we did look at all the things, would we consider duplexes, would we, could we do an apartment complex? But the thing that really settled with me when we landed on these cottages or tiny homes is our families can't, one, we can't afford to build an apartment complex, the funding just hasn't been coming to Cedro Woolley the way we wish it would. And so to start that, you typically cannot open one unit until everything is built, and we need housing now. We can't wait five years to come up with the funding. And two, it's really hard for our families now to ever consider owning, and futuristically, this could be a model someday where a family could actually own that home, and I can't think of one family in our program right now that could anytime in the near future ever think of having homeownership again. So it's a solution to kind of a growing problem we also have.
Excellent. Councilwoman Lavaca.
Thank you very much. I met with you recently, and that was a really good walkthrough and pretty eye-opening, so a couple of things I just wanted to clarify or get confirmation on. It's, basically, it's a child-based program, family-based program, so children are present in every, in every situation, every housing, every opportunity there. And so with that, there are stipulations on drug use, on mental health, on, you know, domestic disturbances, any of that stuff. And then there's verification that those children are belonging to that parent or grandparent or family member.
And they must be attending school as well unless they're certified, homeschooled through the state or the school district.
Yeah. You know, I've seen it work in a lot of different churches, like Impact Ministries or various places where they go from place to place, and I didn't understand at the time, there's actually that home base, which is here in Cedro Woolley, and then at 5 o'clock, they all go to different churches to live at those churches. I was wondering how they kind of got there or where that was. So having that care facility for counseling and strengthening, I do like that a lot, too. You've done a lot with the little that we've given, that we have been giving, and one thing I would, you know, be curious on as a council or whatnot, because we're... because we're, we take in so much in a tax. It's about $240,000 a year. We have over $500,000 in the bank right now, and it can only be used for this type of program, either rental assistance or brick and mortar. We've seen some other programs, and it looked like it might not be the best for the bank. And then also, you, you work throughout the county. So you're in Seidra Woolley, but you also work in all throughout the county. So it's not just like, you know, it's not supporting other opportunities. And I think that's something that was important to Kevin Loy in the past and others as well. So maybe you can touch a bit more on that. And if you were to get more funding, would it be something that you guys would use or could use? Or are you guys like, hey, we're staffed, we're maxed out on what we can take in, and there would be better opportunity for other people to use that?
I would say, that sounds like a couple of questions to me. One, when it comes to what, what our current needs are, we, Skagit County and Seidra Woolley needs more, right? We are maxed out in our shelter because of space. And that's why we're, we're launching and publicly launching in 2025 at Capital Campaign and kind of soft-launching right now because there's such a demand. We could serve more. We have, we have good staffing. We could use more. But we're, we're really stuck in our space. And the housing market, it's really hard even for a nonprofit that has really good relationships with landlords throughout the community to be able to maintain long-term a housing structure that we can put our families in in a cost-effective way. So, um, yes, we would definitely use more money. And, and is brick and mortar would be for like building housing? Yes. So our Capital Campaign in its three stages is the preliminary, which you guys have been helping with already, which is purchasing Promise House, stabilize what we have. We've done a lot of that, a lot of leadership, a lot of staff growth, and it's doing really well. Phase two is purchasing that land or going under a contract where we're allowed to build on that land, knowing that we will be owners at some point, and then begin building those houses. And we will need more staffing when that happens, but we will also be able to back off of some of the grant funding that we're using right now that has been at risk many times during some of the crises we've been in over the last eight years of operation. So it would really stabilize us in Seidra Woolley. As to what you were saying about, we do serve all around Skagit County. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think about 50 to 60% of our clients come from Seidra Woolley. They're, come from Seidra Woolley School Districts, work in Seidra Woolley. They may be living in other cities, but reside, you know, half of their, their home base is here. And they've moved simply because they can't afford housing, or they can't find the housing here. And vice versa. People end up in Seidra Woolley that are really from Mount Vernon. And so we keep housing throughout Skagit County because our goal is really to return the children to the city where their resources are, where their family is, where their school is, really stabilize them as quickly as possible. So.
So when you talk about being able to let go of some of the grants, not being so reliant on them, just to be clear, that is because you will have them paying rent or house payment to you?
So in the, in the park models, we will have, just like our transitional housing, it's a phased-up program. In shelter, they pay nothing. We don't, it's kind of a 90-day stay as long as they're, as long as they're meeting their goals. We don't kick them out because they can't find housing. We do our best to make sure that they're ready to move into transitional housing and get that emergent trauma level spaces available. But when they move up, they do pay small program fees. And as they move up into third stage, then they pay all of their fees and their utilities. So if we can build units that are more affordable for our families, they can continue to work on their career paths, saving, paying off debts, good futures for their children's college funds. Imagine that for kids these days, you know? And at the same time, we would balance our own budget and be able to provide much higher quality care, stabilize staffing, stabilize leadership trainings, things of that nature.
I want to give Councilwoman Cock an opportunity to ask any questions or make comments. I cannot see who's online, but, and I cannot see if your hand is raised. But Paul, would you like to make any comments? Make sure you're not muted.
Who, uh, who monitors like this camp? Who would, I mean, would there be people, if they were out of bounds, that would be asked to leave?
Yes. So we would be, at the stage of building all the houses, we will hire a third case manager that will be in charge of this. We have program agreements, and also kind of in reliance to what, what you asked as well. They have, once they step into our program, they must remain clean. If they, or in active mental health counseling, they must remain employed, or all the things that are a part of their housing plan. And if they don't, they do get some consequences. We don't immediately kick them out. We're always working on fixing the behavior for their children so that they can have good, solid parents in their lives. And if they don't, then yes, we, we do remove them from our properties. But typically, what we do is we'll put them in a hotel and then have other services wrap around them. So we, we never want to return to the streets, but we do have to keep our housing and the children in that housing safe.
All right, thank you.
As a follow-up question, do you work closely with DSHS? You know, are there various programs to help the families?
Oh, most definitely. We work with most nonprofits in Skagit County and kind of client share and resource together. And DSHS is like actually on our top three things that they have to do when they first enter into programming.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Henderson.
Audra, thanks for coming in. We always appreciate you guys coming in. And you've extended all of us an invite to come tour your facility. And I, I hope to do that very soon. Councilwoman Loy's been keeping me really busy getting ready for the skate competition. But, um, I just wanted to discuss a little bit further on a couple of different things that you touched on. One of them was a potential homeownership for, um, for, uh, families in the program that, you know, tiny houses and stuff like that. My question on the homeownership would be what happens when their children become adults?
If they're in our programming?
Right.
Typically, if they're in our programming, then we're working on that before they get there and stabilizing them. We don't, we're not going to have somebody leave the program because their child ages, you know, becomes an adult. A lot of times, we will, as long as they're in school, I mean, they're still considered a child to us because it's a, you know, they're still in school age. We have had some people that have tried to come back because they're graduates, and we will refer them and work with other programs. We wouldn't ever exit somebody, though, because their child become 18 during the program. But they couldn't, there's timelines. So they, that probably, it just never has happened.
Okay. Specifically, specifically what my question was, was you touched on these, these families becoming homeowners of homes in this tiny home village, right?
No, my goal would be is if we can create a model like this, futuristically, these could be, if, if allowed, they could be pulled off and then a new model could be built. So they could, wherever they are allowed to take these models at some point, if we got to that point. That's a lot more work than I can envision right now. But that would be, that is kind of the dream, that we could work out something where they could take the cottage someplace else. And then we could put a new one with the funds that we would keep in a designated fund to then create another house. That makes sense.
Okay, that, that does make sense.
Raymond would explain it so much more eloquently than I just did. I'm sorry.
And, uh, so my other, my other question, with our, with our 1590 funds we get through sales tax, 40% of that will, is required to go towards service-related stuff. The other, or is it 60 and 40? I have it right. Okay. And then 60 goes towards brick and mortar projects.
Okay.
So, uh, one of the things we've kind of been discussing over the last several months is, is eviction prevention for people who already are here in Seidra Woolley, who are at risk of losing their home. As we all know, it's harder to get somebody into a home than it is to keep them in one they're already in.
Definitely.
Is that something that your organization has capacity to help manage?
Most definitely. We are serving about 100 families a year with eviction prevention right now. And we currently are starting the hiring process to bring on a second case manager, Spanish-speaking, for that program. And we're also looking at bringing different funding. We get a National Pocket, we get some county funding. We've had some private donors, but yes, most definitely.
Okay.
And we have a 91% success rate of keeping families prevented once they enter our homeless prevention programs.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone else? Go ahead, Councilwoman Burns.
Really appreciated the tour that I took a few weeks back. It really gave me a better insight into exactly how your program works. But two questions I think I forgot to ask.
Okay.
How many different churches are you currently working with that people are staying at as they move around?
I think we have, I think we have 11 churches where they're staying at now. A healthy rotation would be 15. So we're at about like 70%, because I'm not a super good math person, but we're, we're short. We have never fully come back from the pandemic. We have 27 churches in total that are supporting. We have a lot more support churches that are coming in and helping even the current host sites that we have.
I see.
Yeah.
And roughly, how many people do you currently have in your program that are doing that rotation?
Rotation is four families at a time. And then we have, we have created a static site for a family that's like prepared to move into transitional housing, but there's not a transitional housing available right now. And that's up to 14 individ, no, 15 individuals can be in rotation at any given time.
Okay, so the people in rotation are all staying at your facility over here in Seidra Woolley?
They're there during the.
They have those rooms and they're.
Yes, correct. I would like to say that they're staying there less. But yes, they are there sometimes, too. And they're always there during the day.
Okay.
When they're not working.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
So I just have one last question. I know the answer to this, because we've talked about this.
Okay.
But we do know that the fastest-growing population that's becoming homeless are those who are 65 and older. And I did ask about the possibility of Family Promise taking some of that on. And you eloquently said that that is not possible, but can you explain why? Because I know that there would be others that would want to know why, how could we, you know, how could we let people who have served our country or given to our community live in their cars and not be able to participate?
Right. It is a really hard thing because we get a lot of elderly that call, a lot of vets that call in, and we will give them resources and make sure they get connected to what little resources we have in Skagit County. On, we do have grandparents that we serve that have their grandchildren in their custody. And there are very difficult situations that they're in, and we do, we do serve at that capacity. But our focus is really on the child. And my reasoning for that, for our national model, is because this helps reduce the chronic homelessness that is coming into our counties. We put a lot of dollars into chronic homelessness, and it is extremely important that we serve those that are out there in the cold. But then we also need to look at the school-aged children, and before school age, the children, who are coming into a lifestyle of poverty and will be presenting with different poverty lifestyles as they grow older. A lot of times, children absorb things that we have no idea how they're processing. And so our specialty is really in creating that home-like environment and trying to stop that as soon as we can, so we can reduce the chronic numbers that we see on the streets.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, do you want to follow up?
Yes.
Actually, it's two questions. One would be the success rate of the people within the program cycling through and going through the steps. The second question would be for the elderly, for the vets. Helping Hands has proposed some ideas. I think they're going to come and, and present something at some point. Have you, have you worked with them at their facility? Thanks.
Yeah, so the first question, success rate for the housing. It is, we had an 80% success rate to permanent housing out of our housing programs last year. And yes, I mean, Helping Hands is our neighbor. We have worked on projects together. We've talked about housing models together. We've talked about tiny homes together. We've talked about apartment complexes together. We've talked about going into something where they serve the vets and the elderly, and we serve the children. So that, that is possible. And I would also say, us ever being able to serve elderly is not a never thing. But, and there are many Family Promises that open up their mission as they stabilize. We are currently not stable enough for the children to say, okay, this issue is starting to dissolve. We can help in other ways. So. But yes, I'm very interested in partnerships. It's a big part of what we do.
Very excellent presentation. For somebody who said that you had to wing it, hello. That was very well done. Always good to have you here. Always good to hear about what you're doing within our community. And we're very grateful that you are here. Thank you, Audra.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to move on now to city administrator report. Charlie, are you online?
Yes, I'm online. For some reason, the camera doesn't work on my computer. But I am here, and Tom Glover's here as well. I don't have a report this evening, but Tom will be on a little bit later for some of the items, and I'll be on a little bit later than that.
All right, okay, moving on then to Councilwoman Loy, your report.
This is the part where I go, huh, what? I just want to give a quick report on our skateboard challenge. We're all ready to go. Everything's lined up. We've got Nick and Alan's going to be our cooks. And we have a lady that's donating the PA system. We got the Wild Wave is, is going to actually run the competition part. So everything's ready to go come Saturday morning. So it's been dead for, I don't know how long it's been dead for, but we'll bring it back to life. And hopefully Alan's a good cook and keep everybody going.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate and thank you for putting that back on and bringing it to our community, a really fun event, and the other two as well for helping with that. And then invite all of you, August 24th and 25th, at the Seidra Woolley Museum to celebrate the love of Northern State history.
All right, thank you. We're looking forward to that, too. That's cool that you're doing that. Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
The only thing I had tonight is a thank you to the Public Works Department and its crew for maintaining the parks, sidewalk, streets, all that good stuff that all the citizens are currently utilizing. I've gotten a lot of comments from people walking out and about and constantly commenting on how good things are looking. So I want to extend that to the crew and let you know that those are being relayed, and people are very appreciative of that, as well as a lot of good comments about the sidewalk repairs that have been being done. And so people are very happy about that and impressed in utilizing them significantly. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Henderson?
So next Wednesday, August 21st, we have, here in the council chambers from 5:00, 6:30, a League of Women Voters Housing Forum. So it's going to be really good to come in and get information from several local panelists. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go and see a presentation done by a company that's looking to put in a battery project here just to the east of town. It's called the Bes, B-E-S-S GoldenEye Project. And you can submit your, any public comment or concerns at, on their website at efscc.wa.gov, and the comment period is open until September 24th. Bill, I have a lot of people that are really excited about a new crosswalk that just sprung up overnight at the, at the Ferry and Township intersection there. That is going to be heavily used by a lot of our Cascade Middle School kids walking to and from the neighborhood. Very, very awesome addition. We're, got a lot of people really excited about it. So thank you.
Thanks. It's been a busy summer.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Cock, do you have anything you'd like to share? Again, make sure your mic is.
Right. I was very excited about the groundbreaking at the stabilization facility this week to address mental health and addiction treatment. Especially great that it's near our community. Because my understanding, and maybe the various chiefs could wait if they had anything to add, is that people in some kind of crisis like this, they end up either at the ER or if they have a criminal thing, in jail. And hopefully, this will deal with some of that. I, I wasn't clear whether this facility is actually in Seidra Woolley's city limits, but if not, it sure is close. But it's a great addition to the community.
Yes, it is. It is within Seidra Woolley limits. Thank you for that.
That's great.
Councilman Burns.
So much going on. I'm grateful to see the groundbreaking on that facility as well. And the sidewalks, crosswalks, I've had a lot of positive comments about that. People are noticing the city's looking a little better. They're, they're appreciating it. I wanted to thank Officer Carr for taking me for a ride along. I wanted to thank Officer Carr for taking me for a ride along. It's good to see what she did, how, how she does code enforcement. And she even took me down to the Humane Society. We ended up getting a puppy. Thanks, Councilmember Loy, for what you're doing. Appreciate it. It's great to have more things for the kids to do. So really happy about that. And the housing forum is a great idea for you to come out and hear what they have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I do want to thank Tom, our Director of Planning. In the packet, there's a, the Countrywide Planning Policy Update, and I won't speak about that, but I will speak about the format of it. And adding in the notations of the RCWs makes it really easy to look things up and, and understand where we're looking at and why we're, why we're looking at these things and, and then have a discussion. I also want to thank Woody up there for doing an amazing job with our tech on this. I mean, you're, you're right on top of it and things are really going smooth, and so that's really awesome, too. I did get a comment from some people about our hanging baskets, and they're looking very good downtown. And they wonder, are they putting special food in there or something like that? We just got a great crew down there that manages and maintains it. So kudos on that and kudos on the city looking good. A lot of stuff going on with the sidewalks and the town.
I think the magic dust is called Miracle Grow. So I, I was very fortunate to be a part of the groundbreaking ceremony that happened yesterday. The Stabilization Center has been renamed. It's now called the Skagit STAR Center. STAR being an acronym for Stabilization, Treatment, and Recovery. It's going to be a 48-bed inpatient facility for both mental health and addiction treatment. And just as Councilman Cock was referencing, this will be a place where police can bring individuals and, and drop them off. And by that, I mean that they don't have to sit for 45 minutes to four hours waiting for the hospital to take them in, emergency to take them in. This will be a place where they can get, be seen immediately. So a very wonderful facility. And huge thanks to the council who last year took the 40% of the 1,590 funding and put it towards not only rental assistance, but also towards this center. So we have a little bit at stake here in the Stabilization Center. And it's, it's, it's actually wonderful that we have this here. We've needed something like this for a long time. And this is only the beginning of what we may see coming our way. We're hoping for a Phase Three. I also wanted to mention the League of Women Voters Housing Forum next Wednesday, the 21st, and it will be here. And I have the honor to be a participant in that. I'll be on one of the panelists. And I want to extend my thanks to Councilwoman Loy for really putting a lot of time and energy and bringing people together to do, do the skate event. It was a great success when it happened last time. I know that there's a lot of eager children to participate in this. These are the kind of memories that kids make and hold on to for a long time. A lot along the line about what Councilwoman Diamond does when it comes to softball. So anyway, thank you very much for doing that. Yeah, I think they will enjoy it. And by the way, those medals are awesome. Okay, and with that, we're going to move on to public comment. I didn't know if there was a sign up sheet? There was nobody on the sign up sheet? Okay. So I'm just going to ask you to come forward. Please give your name and keep it to about three minutes. And if you can just let us know how you are affiliated with the city, that would be great. And make sure the blue button is on, on the mic, too, when you go to speak. So is there anybody who'd like to come forward?
My name's Dorothy Defremery, and I live at 316 Garden of Eden. And I wanted to comment about the Hanson's Development Proposal. I live very close to the site. And I wanted to share that when I moved there, I had one neighbor to the north, one neighbor to the south of me, each on an acre and a half, and five acre pasture to the west. And right now, on that eight acres, we have 48 residences. My concern is for the impact that this amount of development is having on our school district. I was talking with people at Evergreen, and there are already four classes at each grade level there. They've had to add three portables and one modular to accommodate the already existing student population. The fifth and sixth grades each have between 25 and 28 students. And if you've been in those portables, that number of sixth grade students, it is very crowded. When I was working there, I was taking around a cart that I had to, you know, roll into these classrooms. And you could barely get in between desks. It, it was really limiting. Evergreen is where, if that development, if that land gets developed, that student population would go to Evergreen, then Cascade and the high school. The Evergreen building is so old and in need of replacement. The last time I was there, the roof was covered with moss and, you know, I'm pretty sure rotten in places. That school was built at a time when they had the open classroom concept. And I was working there in one room where it was so hot that I was, it was, used to be the cooking room. So I would make my coffee and put it in the freezer to cool down. But right outside my door was another classroom, and they were freezing. So if I tried to adapt the heat, you know, it just went back and forth. It, it didn't work. So that's just a comment about the facility. But there doesn't seem to be money to replace that building. I think it's been attempted and never succeeded. I feel that the developers are not being charged-
Dorothy, I, I'm sorry. That's, three minutes is-
Oh.
Yeah. Can you wind it up in about 30 seconds?
I'll try.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we're charging developers an adequate fund for bringing in more students than the schools can handle. And I am strongly opposed to annexing any more land into the city until those costs are resolved and there's more schools available to serve those children. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dorothy. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, if the comments are about the Hanson annexation, they need to be within the public hearing so that those individuals become parties of record.
All right, yes. So is that what yours is going to be about? Okay. So we are going to be doing a public hearing right after the public comments. And if it's about the Hanson, you can actually have your comments read into the record at that point, if that's what you like to do. Okay?
So I have to sit down and wait for that first?
If, if, if you, well, you could-
I can speak now?
Well, it's, it's a matter of, we have a public-
If you have public comments on matters that are not related to the Hanson annexation, then those are appropriate now. But comments related to the Hanson annexation are appropriate within the context of the public hearing.
All right. So is there anybody else who has comments other than about the Hanson annexation?
I guess this was about the annexation.
All right, hearing. And is there anybody online who would like to make public comment? All right. Seeing no hands go up, we will move on. I will close public comment, and we are going to move on to public hearings. So there you are. And the way that we're going to do public hearing, we're going to begin first with the, with the Hanson annexation. This is ordinance 207724. And action is being requested tonight. The way that we will run this public hearing, this particular public hearing, we will have the Director of Community Development, Tom Glover. He will present the issues and the recommendation and give the background and information. After he has completed, I will open it up to the public at that point, and they can give comment regarding the annexation. And then, once that is completed, we will turn it, I will turn it over to the council so that they can do questions and comments. And at that time, if they so choose, we will take action. Action is being requested tonight. So with that, Director Glover, I am going to turn this over to you.
Madam Mayor, before we get started, I'd like to recuse myself from the Hanson annexation and any action taken.
So noted. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Diamond would like to be recused from the Hanson annexation, ordinance 270024. Thank you. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we are presenting to you an ordinance that, if approved, would adopt the 48.66 acres of property that is proposed by the Hanson's into the city of Seidra Wully, city limits. Back in April, council did approve a resolution that essentially authorized staff or directed staff to move forward with pursuing this annexation process. To that end, we did submit the application to the Boundary Review Board and to other county offices. We've heard back from them that they have no issue with the annexation. Also since then, and a few days ago, we did receive a comment, or I received an email comment from, moment please, Jeanette Goodman and Roy Lindsey, and I can read that comment into the record if you are prepared to hear that.
I would read that in as soon as the public hearing piece opens.
Okay, will do. So anyway, this has been before council and before Planning Commission. And tonight is the final step, and staff is requesting approval of the ordinance that will enact the annexation.
Okay. With that, I will now open it up to the public for comment regarding the Hanson annexation. And I don't know if at this time, Director Glover, you would like to read into the record?
Yes, I can. I'm reading off my phone here, the small print. It says, "We are opposed to the request by Laura Hanson to have her 48 acres annexed into the city of Seidra Wully. Number one, the future development would add traffic problems. There is not enough road access. A small driveway north of her is not adequate for improvement, and other access is, and the other access is Birch Lane, which is not a road but a lane, not adequate room for two-way flowing traffic. The tax burden on others for improvement and upkeep on the needed roads is unfair for us taxpayers." Would have, would have to, excuse me, would have no benefit for this annexation. Number two, the increase in traffic would add pollution, noise pollution, and safety concerns as entering Jones Road from Garden of Eden or Birch Lane has already become a serious issue with the Jones Estate development. The increase of traffic with poor visibility to the east entering Jones Road and people driving too fast, not being able to see a car coming until we've had to pull out into Jones Road to see if cars are coming. They're sure to be T-bone occurrences. Number three, her land has salmon streams running through it with live salmon, and the environmental impact would be devastating to the wetlands. There are laws to protect the salmon for a reason, and we need to respect those laws. Number four, the impact on the schools, fire, and medic departments would also be problematic, taxing our already overburdened systems. And number five, encroachment of the city limits on those who do not want to be annexed into the city. Sincerely, Jeanette Goodman and Roy Lindsey.
All right, thank you. And I do have a sign up sheet here, so I'm going to go in order. The next is Cindy McKeon.
Good evening. I'm a property owner on Apple Lane. And I have more questions that I would really like to ask. And my first one is concerning because none of my neighbors on Apple Lane were notified of this meeting. There's no signs posted. There's nothing unless somebody happens to be odd like I and read the legal notices. So my question is, what's your policy on really informing the public of what's going on? Because these are people who are going to be the most impacted that didn't know this was coming. One of your documents that I see says it will be published and posted. So I, my question is, what does posted mean and where, where did that happen?
Okay. So we can have somebody who can be in touch with you regarding that? I won't answer that right now, but yeah. Anything else?
I'm concerned like Roy and Jeanette are about traffic. Apple Lane, you can barely fit two cars on, so I don't know what the egress and ingress is planned for that. I'm also concerned about Willard Creek and how that's going to be protected. And also, how does this impact those of us who are like in a two-block area that don't want to be a part of the city?
Okay.
So those are my questions.
So Cindy, sitting over here, we have Nicole McGowan, who is our planner. And I think if you guys exchange emails or numbers, cell numbers, you'll be able to have your questions answered by our building planner.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, and Teresa Ann Johnson?
My name is Teresa Ann Johnson. I'm a retired RN. My husband of almost 49 years is David Charles Johnson, a retired woodworker. We bought our property of two and a third acres, 8697 Garden of Eden Road, which was originally 858 Garden of Eden Road in May 1989. And we raised our two daughters here. We were enchanted with the land, the creek, the house, which was built in the late 1800s, and the country feel about the place. The creek used to be called Wallard Creek. Somehow, its name got changed to Willard Creek, and it has two parts that confluence on the southwest corner of our property before heading through other neighbors' properties to join the Samish River. On our property, one branch of Willard Creek comes from the north and the other branch comes from the east. Willard Creek usually almost always now dries up for the summer, usually July. However, chum salmon come to spawn around Thanksgiving time. 35 years ago, we enjoyed lots of splashing of these salmon, and we'd see multiple dead carcasses on Willard Creek banks after their spawning. Over the years, we've seen fewer and fewer salmon, and for the first time ever, we didn't see salmon this last winter for the first time. We've seen other trout-sized fish in the creek as well, and usually in the spring, we see schools of small salmon fry frolicking in the deeper pools of water before heading downstream. We know of neighbors, several, who have manipulated the flow of Willard Creek. Not to name any names, and not being a scientist, we can't help to think that with the increase of the population around us and the manipulation of humans to the wetlands, there is much damage done to affect the salmon and other wildlife which we love. We don't use herbicides or pesticides on our land, and we don't burn plant debris, but instead compost and make places for animals to live. We used to see beaver every year swimming in the creek. I have a video on my phone of a beaver swimming from one end of our property to the other, but we didn't see beaver this year. We have always had great blue herons, salamanders, and at least three kinds of frogs, garden snakes, lizards, raccoons, the occasional skunk, but these animals are becoming fewer. We have had herds of elk, one brown bear, one cougar, a fox that we've seen on our property. We've seen lots of coyotes, several bobcats, lots of deer, but these animals are fewer. We have weasels, squirrels, moles, voles, and the wonderful slug eating opossums. We see wood ducks, mallards, mergansers, the occasional pheasant, lots of bald eagles, especially when the salmon are present. We see Cooper's hawks, red-tailed hawks, kestrels year-round, and merlins in the winter. We've seen peregrine falcons, virginia rails, killdeer snipes, mourning doves, barn owls, screech owls, great horned owls, barred owls, hummingbirds, red-breasted sap-suckers, downy woodpeckers, hairy woodpeckers, flickers, the occasional piliated woodpecker, lots of songbirds, including vireos, stellar jays, crows, raven swallows, chickadees, bush tits, nut hatches, brown creepers, wrens, kinglets, robins, varied thrush, starlings, blackbirds, waxwings, warblers, roof inside tobes.
Teresa, your three minutes is up. Did you want to wrap it up in just about 10 seconds or so?
I have a page and a half to go. My husband can give me his time if that'd be all right with you. My husband can give me his time if that'd be all right with you.
I'll read my time to her.
Okay.
Okay. My husband, David Johnson, gives me his three minutes.
I have him here, all right, thank you.
So other birds we have waxwings, warblers, roofed acided toes, several kinds of sparrows, junkos, grosbeaks, the rare oriole, lots of finches, and pine siskins. When we first moved here, the neighborhood was quiet. Now we have lots of traffic. We have to wait for all the cars to go by when we cross the street to get the mail. We have picked up and buried several hit-and-run dead animals, like deers, raccoons, weasels, opossums, squirrels, snakes, birds, and multiple pets, ours and our neighbors. We have wonderful well water, a septic system that's well-maintained, and we recycle everything we can, only needing to haul our trash once a year. We never had to lock our house or car until this year. This year, we had our first vandalism, as in April, a $20,000 tractor was stolen, several hoses stolen, and garden tools were stolen. And the sheriff couldn't do anything about it. I haven't told you about all the trees and gardens we have, but the soil is lovely, and with all the native bees and pollinators, our place is alive. A retired fireman found our place full of flowers a few years ago, and we gladly agreed to allow him to keep his domestic bees in our herb garden. Our biggest concerns for the city, swallowing up this gorgeous area of Skagit County on the Garden of Eden Road, is, number one, ruining the creek, the wetlands, the vegetation, the homes and lives of the birds, the frogs, the fish, other wildlife, and the peace. Number two, the pollution of increasing the population as we are seeing more and more traffic, more littered garbage, and we fear for more vandalism. Three, we don't want to lose our freedom of country life, our privacy, our clean, adequate well water, nor do we want to pay higher taxes, which are much higher than they used to be anyway. And we love the Garden of Eden, and I thank you.
All right, thank you.
Would you like the letter?
I don't think we need, do we need it for the, no. And it's been read into the record, so we have it. Okay. So Teresa, there's another Teresa Johnson? Yes?
And we're not related.
Okay, all right, all right.
We're neighbors.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't repeating myself here.
No, there are two of us.
Yeah.
Hello, I am Teresa Johnson. I also live on Garden of Eden Road 8596, which is near the Hanson annexation proposal. My understanding is this proposal would add 250 new homes to the city. I am concerned, all these new additions to the city will turn Cedar Woolley into a city with all the attendant challenges that larger cities are now facing and continue to address. This will no longer be a small rural town anymore, which is what many people sought when they chose to make Cedar Woolley their home. I would now like to quote from the countywide planning policies update, which is also on the agenda. It's quite a good quotation, it's 5.2. "Home occupations that do not significantly change or impact neighborhoods' character shall be permitted." I'd like to read that again. "Home occupations that do not significantly change or impact the neighborhood character shall be permitted. I would suggest locating 250 homes on 48.66 acres will fundamentally and permanently alter the existing environment and the adjacent properties profoundly. I acknowledge that people don't purchase property simply to provide a green space for their neighbors in perpetuity. However, responsible development that retains the semi-rural character of this city is necessary for the future livability and viability." I thank you.
All right, thank you, Teresa. Next, I have James Massey. Am I saying the name correctly?
I'd signed that by mistake. I was just here for him.
All right, thank you, James. Laura Hanson.
I'm helping Laura Hanson with this development.
Okay.
I don't have vast experience at development, but a fair amount, mostly in Mount Vernon, pardon me, some here in Cedar Woolley and some in Island County. Some of the numbers thrown around recently are a little haywire. My, it's not been drawn yet, of course, but the number of homes is likely to be 165 or less, not the 250. The other thing I heard was concern about schools. Schools aren't built before development, they're built during or after development. So everything takes a natural order. The same with traffic, you know, roads and access will be considered by Laura's engineer and working with the city to, to provide at the end of the development, proper, safe access to and from the development. You know, it's understandable, I guess, that people that haven't been involved in development wouldn't, may not know that. It'd be good, maybe, that the city could explain that for them. These are not, it's just not a free-for-all out here. The idea that developers don't pay enough to properly maintain schools is another sort of odd thing. Really, developers don't pay. They, they sell lots. People that buy homes on those lots pay for the school. People need homes. They obviously, if, if you want a home, you're gonna have a road, you're gonna have a school for your kids. So I, I think it'd just be a good idea to, you know, keep the, keep reality in mind here versus just loose talk about the school's this and the traffic's crappy and, you know, the ducks are gonna leave. It's really not the way it works. It's either that or have no development at all in Cedar Woolley, and, and neither the city government or the state and the federal government see it that way. So as far as change out there on this 46 acres, you'd have to tell me, but I think it's been more than 20 years ago that this was moved into the urban growth area. So it shouldn't be a surprise. It's not fair to be surprised now or act surprised now.
Your three minutes is up, thank you. Laura, did you want to speak, or is there anybody else who would like to speak on this? Okay. Please state your name and try to keep it to three minutes and how you're associated with Cedar Woolley.
So my name's Troy Hanson. I'll be speaking forth for my family, Lori Hanson, and past Earl Hanson. To go a little bit about the property that we were speaking of, first, all the neighbors, my heart's with you. I was born and raised on that piece of property. I was born in 1981. The only time I left was for college, and I came right back. To go forth a little bit, it's very nice. I don't think anybody's heart's in it more than mine and my family's, but I may be standing corrected, but 1974 to 1976 was put in by the state, the federal government, and the county as urban growth area to the railroad tracks. My father was told in the late 70s that his property would be taken for a new annexation for a road that would connect Grip Road to Garden of, the first Garden of Eden, to Cook Road by Commissioner Rohr. That did not go through. In 2008, we asked to have a short plat of five acres on top of the hill. We did our due diligence, and by the, two administrations ago, by this county, or by the city, we were told we would give up our property for that new road. That fell through. But we went through and put the water lines in by PUD standards to the county standards, and two administrations ago, we were told we'd give up more property for city improvements. That, I'd love to tell you his name, I forgot, but that was 2008, 2010, that went to the wayside. But we did give up property for easements and right-of-ways to the city. So, breaks my heart. We'd love to do it, or we'd love to see it be the way it is, but you've just got to realize it's either grow up or grow out. We have apartments coming into this city. We've already been threatened with shadow plating inside the city. What do you do? So, leave it to this. We've been accused of a lot of things throughout the years our family has on that piece of property. We have played by the rules. We have paid the highest taxes we can, and we've kept to ourselves. We've been accused of farming and fertilizing, but sometimes we haven't. We've always kept to ourselves. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Yes, go ahead.
My name's Phil Murray. I'm wondering about accessory dwellings. Does this qualify for accessory dwellings, because it could double the amounts of houses that are there and they double the amounts of people there? I don't know the plans of it. It's a big concern because the schools will be overloaded. So I've seen it in Stanwood, a development comes in and you need to build a new school, and it gets very expensive. I mean, people's property taxes, my mother's is like $8,000 a year now because of all the schools building they've done around Stanwood. Anyway, it's just a concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Since I gave my comment at the wrong time, can I add one little?
Sure.
I would just like to speak to the earlier statement about how the developers shouldn't be the ones responsible for taxing for the new schools. I believe there is an impact statement that they are supposed to contribute to the building of new schools. But the reason I bring that up, as I said, on the eight acres surrounding me, there were three families. There are 48 residences now, and there are no new schools. And I'm talking about a very small area, and that's happening all over. Evergreen is where they all feed into. It's a decrepit building. It should be torn down, and that was, I think, the recommendation. Tear it down is a better use of the money and to build a new one. Nothing has happened with that. But to keep adding, and I'm not, you know, singling them out, for the city to keep permitting more and more development before the problem with the schools is addressed is an insult to the people who already are working and have students in the Cedar Woolley schools. And I just feel very strongly that that issue needs to be resolved, especially before you bring more people within city limits. I mean, if you look at Cook Road, how many families are there now? If you look at, you know, all the developments Janicki's have put in, how many families have they brought in? And yes, I understand the need for housing, but there has to be a limit. There has to be a point where you say, this is too much for our school system, and it is not fair to the residents and the children who are already there. It's, you know, you can't keep up quality education if you keep adding to an overtaxed system without fixing it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, hearing none, I'm going to turn this over to the council for questions or comments.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Can I start? My first question is, I was really struggling to find Appendix D throughout this entire thing for the results of the Boundary Review Board. I scrolled through it about 20 times over the last two days and couldn't find Exhibit D. The Boundary Review Board approved annexation.
Tom, do you have an answer for that, or?
I have a bar copy right here.
Okay.
Couple of pages past the maps.
Okay. Couple of pages past the maps.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else?
Yep. So when this, when this was originally submitted, it included, if you could clarify, the Hanson-Greeno-Weiss requested annexation is 44.14 acres within the blue lines on, whoops, wrong way, Exhibit C. And then, there is a Mumford property subject to annexation agreement, 2.5 acres, seven parcels within red line. So, two questions at the top in the header, it's 48.66 acres total. I have two numbers here, 44.14 and 2.5 acres that don't equal 48.66 acres. So we're like missing a little bit here. But we'll, we'll get to that in a minute. The Mumford, the entire Mumford property was included in that initial, the initial request, which covered to the east boundary of where the Hanson property is. So it doesn't include Dairy, Dairy Street, which is within the Cambridge Commons, which would be a natural approach to a development like that. And if I'm not mistaken, the sewer lines on Dairy Street, too, capped at the end of it, which would require this development to go all the way around. So is, is there a reason why the rest of the Mumford property wasn't submitted this time but was initially?
Either Tom or Nicole?
It actually might be easier if I answer this one.
Okay, okay.
So initially, what happened was the council, as part of the initial request to annex, which was three or so years ago, expanded the geographic boundaries to include that additional Mumford parcel that was not subject to the annexation agreement. We've had conversations about this offline, and I went back and looked at the council meeting where you met with the applicants, the second annexation petition, and council did not geographically modify the boundaries. And the petition that was circulated included only the 15 parcels, the eight plus the seven Mumford parcels that were not subject, or that were subject to the annexation agreement that the city was able to sign off on, sign on behalf of. And so what ended up getting circulated and moved forward was just the parcels that the petition included, not that additional Mumford parcel that was not a part of the annexation agreement, the seven.
So is there an intent for Dairy Street to be annexed through the Mumford property? There's a hammerhead built there, there's sewer drug all the way up to the end of it. Kind of curious as to what the intent is there.
So my understanding is that planning at the time thought that it was a good idea to pull that parcel in, and John Colmey made reference to it in, during the course of the meeting with council. However, the motion that was passed was to accept the annexation petition as it was, and that's what ended up moving forward through the process, was the original petition, as opposed to the geographically modified chunk that would have included that Mumford parcel.
All right, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you very much. So to, just to recap off of what Councilman Henderson's saying, to bring that Mumford into the annexation now, would that basically set this process? to bring that Mumford into the annexation now, would that basically set this process back, or is that something we can vote in at a different time if we already have infrastructure to that area, if that's what we choose to do?
So you couldn't change the boundaries tonight, because the time to geographically modify is at that first meeting with the applicant. And since that was not done, and it went through the process the way it was, we couldn't now bring in that Mumford parcel.
Well, thank you. On, on this one right here, I think I had just been elected to council, and I didn't even know I had a meeting that night. And then Mayor Julia, you gave me, you called me and then gave me the packet a few hours before. And so I had a couple of questions that night, and the main thing was about our, our education system, the schools, and what do we do there? There wasn't any ability to answer that question within the council or the staff that I felt at the time, and it was to leave the schools kind of in their silo, and it's not really relevant in that area. So I, I, obviously I voted it down. I was a deciding vote on that one. But I thought about that quite a bit afterwards as far as like, what, what does it mean to bring this annexation in there? And I think that you touched on it in our strategic planning meeting following that year in May of, of why didn't we add it in when we have growth and housing and different things like that? And, you know, I've been looking at the schools. They are getting packed, and at the same time, we are building out as a community, and it makes it challenging. It makes it challenging with all the school systems we have. Cascade, it's challenging. Evergreen, it's challenging. But that, I think, that from what I understand, is that's going to grow as the community grows. And so it's something where it's come before the taxpayer a couple of times of like, should we do this, or should we do this? And at the time, the taxpayers are, no, we probably shouldn't do another school, or we shouldn't feed into this area. I think if it starts pressing against the wall, then, then taxpayers are going to work with the school board to do it, or the school boards are going to find some coin to, to add that in. And I look around Cedar Woolley, and there's really no place to grow. And we've talked about this in our strategic planning meetings before. This would be the most logical and most likely the only place we could grow or re-annex going forward for a long time, if ever. So it does make logical sense as far as the growth structure there. I think there was some apprehensiveness about the Bucko Estates, and I've gone through their, they aren't like, you know, tiny villages where it's just packed and, and really poorly built. They're actually, they look pretty nice. And I know some people that live over there, and they were surprised as well that it, it does kind of create a community feel. It's a different kind of community because you're seeing growth of modern structures arising, and of course, there's a cost with those as well. I look around the map from Cedar Woolley, and there's so much green space every other direction, going up north, east, west, south. We got a river, and even farther south, there's more green space. So it's, it's not like we're taking the last bit of green space in Skagit County and really having that on the chopping block. I think what we're looking at is, is there a need for growth within Cedar Woolley, and, and can we do it? And is it make, is it make financial sense and logical sense at this point, knowing that it will cause some stress to the infrastructure? And I'm inclined to think it will be a benefit for our community, and it's something that, you know, at this point, from our discussions in strategic planning, probably should move forward with. And I wish I would have considered that Mumford. I think when that was going through with John, I don't think it was very clear that we would lose that infrastructure that was put in place at that, but it is what it is.
Okay. Councilman Cassidy?
Thank you. As being born and raised here, I, I don't like seeing the growth. It's very hard for me to sit up here and listen to you guys and, and listen to the people coming in. But I don't want to see high density. I would much rather see one very nice home on a very large lot than cramming us all in here, and that's what we're, we're up against. It's going to be one or the other. And I've done my due diligence in talking with the schools, and my children went through Evergreen, so I, I know the stress that lies within that school as well. I just want to know, in what we've heard, because I sat on there last time, and I'm sitting here now, it doesn't feel right without the, the Mumford, and perhaps it wasn't, you know, explained well enough to us. But I feel like whatever that they had first brought through should be what we're looking at now. And I don't feel like that is what's happening. So I want to make sure that if that Mumford piece was the, the piece that made the sense for this piece, I don't think it's fair not to have it added in with this. So can someone explain that a bit more, or what that would look like if we sent that back? So it could be added in, what, what happens to them for this piece?
I think, Nikki, that would be a good explanation. I, I know that once we had passed that, then it goes through another process altogether. And you might want to explain the details. It's, it's, it's a process, and it's the law.
Right. So, you know, it starts with a petition to annex, which then is presented to the city council within 60 days of filing the petition. And then the council speaks with the applicant and determines based on the conversation with the applicant and the conversations with the Development Services whether or not to accept the petition and allow for a circulation of a formal petition, or to geographically modify it. In this case, again, there was a comment made by John that, you know, the logical boundaries would include that other Mumford parcel. However, again, the motion made was not to modify the, the proposed boundaries and include that. So realistically, you would kind of have to go back to that beginning phase where we, again, talk about what makes sense in terms of geographic boundaries. You would want to then make the Mumfords aware, right? Because I believe the first time we heard this annexation four or five years ago, the Mumfords were opposed to annexing this piece. And you would certainly want to make them aware of what was happening, right? Which is a part of the reason why we would need to sort of move back in the process, right? So that we can involve them in that conversation. So, never having seen this done before, my gut would say that we would move back to, back to the petition process, where they, we essentially treat their position, or their petition as a new petition and move it forward through the council in the way prescribed by the RCWs. And that would mean going back to county, recirculating the 60% petition if we're adding in that additional parcel, going back to county, and then going back to the Boundary Review Board and having the council pass a resolution again.
Where do the Mumfords stand now, though?
So the Mumfords, the, there's a seven parcel piece that they don't have a choice. The city is signing on their behalf. They, they did not sign agreeing to the annexation. The city is signing on their behalf because there's a annexation agreement that says they can't protest. But the larger parcel, I, I don't have the answer to where they stand. They were opposed initially, so I'm not certain where they stand today.
Madam Mayor, there may be a comment in the back regarding.
I do see that, but right now, it's the council. I don't know.
I, I just didn't know if you saw.
Okay, I'm Rick Mumford. You guys want to know how I stand?
Yeah.
Actually, to be honest with you, I don't want any of it. I'm not going to oppose what they're doing, because I think what if, if they want to do their part, that's fine. If you guys want to put the two and a half acres in for everything, that's fine. I'm definitely opposed to putting the house and the rest of it in. That's just the way I stand. So, but I, I'm not opposing what they're doing. It's their property. They should be able to do what they want. But I don't want to be in the city. I've got no desire to be in the city.
Okay, all right. Councilman Burns, you had a question, comment?
Comment. I share a great many of the concerns that have been expressed here today about annexing the property, but I also realize that we have a very, very low vacancy rate in Skagit County and in Cedar Woolley. And without increasing the number of houses here as far as expanding our footprint, Councilmember Cassidy is correct. Density is what happens because the state isn't giving us much of a choice in this matter. We're either going to get denser, or we're going to get larger. And larger, I guess, is my preference of the two options. I want to see it done responsibly. I'd like to see that creek protected. If there's still salmon in there, I'd like to see them in there in 10 years. That is livelihood for many people in the Skagit as well. And to my knowledge, with the state requirements, that will be done. From what I've seen in other projects in the area, that creek will be protected. I have concerns about our schools, but as a council member, I don't have control over the schools. I have a young son who's going to be going through them, so I will reap the benefits of whatever happens or the downsides, no matter how this goes. And I do support increasing the, the support for our schools, building a replacement for Evergreen. Personally, that's something I support, but it's not something I have control over as a council member. I believe that this is a logical thing for us to do as far as a city. When I look at the property around us, we have protected farmland, we have land that's not buildable, and then we have a river. Going north is really the option that we have as a city. So when I look at everything that's before me, and considering my belief on allowing people as much latitude as I reasonably can with doing what they like with their own property, this seems like the logical thing for me to go head with. So I am in support of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lloyd, did you have a comment you'd like to make?
Well, I remember the first time I heard about this area is about 20 years ago when I was on the Planning Commission. So this has been floating around for a long time, so it shouldn't surprise anybody. The, I know everybody's concerned about schools, but schools have their own taxing authority. They have a bigger budget than the city's got, so they need to start building their schools. I've been complaining about Evergreen as long as I can remember, but they don't do anything about it. And the city has no authority to do it, but the school district has the funding sources, and it's up them to do it. The, the area that we're talking about has been discussed for development for years and years and years. And especially now that they've gone through and done their applications and done all their legal things they need to do, it wouldn't be right to turn back and try and say, well, we're going to change this. We, you can't change it. Once, they've done their, they've, they've done their duty, and they deserve an answer, and they deserve a legal answer, not a, the city council just can't say, I don't want it. They've got to have legal reasons not to do it. So it, it, you know, the applicant has an absolute right to get a deci, a legal decision. He's done everything that's been requested of him. And I don't know the gentleman, but I know it's, this area's been talked about for years, and they've gone through and done what's required, and they deserve an answer.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Cock, I want to give you opportunity to ask question or to make comment, or both?
Yes. Let me give, my video's not working for some reason.
But we can hear you. I can, I assure you, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah. I, I agree with many of the comments made already. You know, Evergreen is, been struggling for years, and I remember, I don't know when it was, they had a, an attempt by the school district, a referendum to, to, to fund improvements there, and it failed. And, you know, it's, I agree with Commissioner Lo, I mean, Councilmember Lloyd, that, you know, we don't have the, and Councilman Burns, we don't have the taxing authority to fix the schools, though I do have concerns. But I think if this project is done responsibly, especially given some due diligence to the environmental and the appearance. I also drove through the Bucko Estates. I thought they were nice. I mean, I, I, I agree. They, it's a nice, nice project. So, you know, nobody wants a neighborhood built right next to them when you've been living in, you know, basically rural area. And I do feel the residents' concerns, but I think if this is done responsibly, it will add to our housing stock, which is crucially important. But I do think there needs to be some, I don't know how to solve the school issue, because that's a problem across our state. We have school districts failing across the state, and somehow the funding mechanisms aren't working. So, but that's not our, you know, that's not our concern. Our concern is the city. And I think, I, I appreciate the, the discussion and the opinions given, but I think the logical thing, if it is done, you know, in a very nice way, is to move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to a-
One moment. I think there's one more comment, if you don't mind, Councilman Lavaca. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment, listening to Paul talking. The, the subject here is the annexation. If it gets annexed and they're going to build houses, then we're going to start all over, going through everything everybody's talking about. So the, the subject today is just the annexation. It's not how many houses, not how they build.
I am.
Not they want. That will come around. You will have all this stuff again, public hearings when they submit and do the paperwork with the city. All that stuff's going to come back. So we're not talking about building houses today. We're talking about annexation, and building houses will come later.
Okay.
Mary Johnson?
Do you have a comment? Yes?
Yeah, if I could, real quick. I, I'm not, I, I really do feel bad for everybody who, who is going to be adversely impacted by this. This, this is the, this is within the boundary of the UGA. It has been for a long time. I actually went and walked around down Birch Lane and took a look at all the property area. I don't, I don't see it being very financially feasible to do a lot of the development that needs to happen without a roadway and utility easement through Dairy Lane. But if, if the, if the applicants don't choose to withdraw without that, I see no reason why not to approve their request. So, thank you.
All right. Any, any other comments? Okay. I'm sorry, we're, we're beyond that. We're going ahead. I think we have a motion that's coming.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Hanson annexation ordinance to 077 TAC 24.
Okay. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, second by Councilman Burns to approve Hanson annexation ordinance 207724. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carries. All right. Thank you, everyone. That was a good discussion. Appreciate the comments as well. Moving on to the second public hearing. This one has to do with the 2024 countywide planning policy update. And Director Tom Glover, I believe this is yours.
Hi, again. I hope you can hear me. We had some audio problems here. I'm on my cellphone now. So, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, good. Great. On the second item, the cities and the county have gotten together to update the countywide planning policies, and those are the policies that all of us agree on as we go through developing the policies that come out of our comp plan. So these are sort of directives to each of us, and we have to agree on all of them. As I understand it, this has gone through the technical advisory committee and the steering committee. And so what you see is, is the result of the work from those committees coming forward. And you can see in the one document the changes that are proposed. So what happens from here is that we are presenting them to council for your comment and feedback. We provided these a couple of weeks ago, a previous meeting, as well to our planning commission. And our, our intent is to get these comments and feedback back to the council of governments by Friday, the 16th. All of your comments and, and suggestions. So we are asking for your feedback, if you have any, and please provide it for us. And let me see if there's anything else I wanted to add. Nicole, did you want to add anything to this? Nicole, did you want to add anything to this?
The Skagit Council of Governments did ask for comments to be provided in writing, and I would ask that you get those to me as soon as possible via email or written letter format. They do have to be provided to Skagit Council of Governments by the 16th, no later than that, so if...
Sixteenth of this month, correct?
Yes, in two days.
Yeah, in two days, yeah.
So you want it tomorrow?
Okay, thank you. Good.
All right, thank you, Tom. So there isn't an action really tonight with what Director Glover says that we're looking for is actually feedback, comments that they have regarding the countywide planning policy. So I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience here in the chamber who would like to make public comment regarding the 2024 countywide planning policy update? Okay, seeing none, I will... Although I don't see anybody online who might be, I'm going to open it up to who might be online that wants to make public comment. Please raise your hand, and we will turn on your mic for you. Okay. I do not see any, so I will close the public comment and turn this over to the council comments and questions. And go ahead, council. Do you have anything you want to ask or make comment about? Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
And so basically, this is the countywide. This is kind of helping with our comp plan, or it'll be a template for that. When are they wanting to see that? They want to see comments in by the 16th, but they're finalizing this one?
Hi, this is Tom again. So what happens next is the steering committee considers the comments that they get back, and they may or may not change what they have there. Then they forward their suggestion, and that's for their September meeting. And then they forward that on to the county commissioners with a request for approval. And at that point, the county commissioners can also change, edit what they want, and then call back an ordinance to adopt.
Okay, awesome.
So probably, to answer your question, by October.
By October. I know that there are some things that are on the ballots this coming election season that seem like it may impact this a little bit. And so I don't know if they're going to have this in stone before that happens. If there are things that kind of allow it not to be, you know, as stringent, then that gives us a little bit more freedom to work within our kind of concept for what we'd love to see for a comprehensive plan. So I just hate to see ourselves locked into an official policy that then the county would have to amend or something like that if laws are repealed or things are done differently. That's my only comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilman Burns.
Mine would be very specific. Section 4.8, oh, of course, I just scrolled. They had struck a line out of there. I got to get back to it now. Apologies. 4.8, the last line was, "Manufactured home parks shall be allowed only within urban and urban growth areas," and that had been struck. Was that due to a new state law, or was that just a choice that they were making?
That's a good question. I don't know what the reason is for that. My guess is that manufactured home parks would require water and sewer service, and so probably are not a good fit for a UGA where there would not be water and sewer, but for cities.
My presumption as well. That's why I was curious about it. I'll just put that in my notes I submit to Nicole. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, if there is nothing else, there is no action tonight. This was just a feedback, questions, comments. And if that is all, I'll open it up one more time to the council. Then I am going to close this public hearing. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we will move on to new business. And the first item is with Director Bullock, and it is land use agreement, WDFW, the Riverfront Boat Launch Maintenance.
So thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So this is... We've... The city of Cedar Wully has shared joint maintenance of the boat launch adjacent to Riverfront Park for several years, and so this is an update to that agreement. It's very similar to the one we've signed in the past. But basically, the city maintains the mowing of the grass and solid waste, as well as grading of the gravel road that makes it part of the boat ramp. And then WDFW owns the land. They're responsible for any capital improvements to the boat launch and also the toilet facilities there. And so one of the benefits the city residents and area residents get is that because of this joint maintenance responsibility, that they don't require Discover Pass be used for people who want to utilize the boat launch, which is kind of the benefit, again, for our area residents and whatnot. But again, this is, I guess, our last agreement we had. It expired about a year ago, so this is updating that agreement. And that's before you for a motion to approve and continue the joint relationship we have with WDFW.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments, Councilman Burns?
Are there any major changes from the last agreement?
Not that I'm aware of, no. It looks almost verbatim.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you. So I was wondering, are there any plans on their end for, like, to build capital to make it nicer or improve it? And then if there's flooding and it gets damaged, are we... I think we're responsible for replacement of anything, or...
So I guess I'll answer that in a couple of different ways. I'm not aware of necessarily any plans for capital improvements out there, but that... Those capital improvements would be the responsibility of WDFW as opposed to something that the city would be putting forth funding for. And then as far as flooding and flood damage, basically the damage that we would be responsible for, if there were any, is going to primarily resolve around potentially regrading of the road, if that was needed. But for instance, if, say, the toilet facilities were damaged by the flooding, that would be WDFW's responsibility. We might have to replace a couple of trash cans if they go away, but because we're responsible for the solid waste port. Because we have a solid waste department, that's good... What we're good at doing. But for the most part, really, it's going to just simply move forward with the maintenance as it has had for the several past years as well. But I could also find out from WDFW if they do have any capital plans, but I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to, it's space that's valuable to the city. We don't have a lot of river access, for sure, and we have a whole river running right through our yard, and it's a beautiful river. So it'd be really cool to see some capital improvements under there. I don't know if they... If the agreement, of course, they own it, if there's any way we can support or encourage.
Right. Mostly, I think we take out the trash and mow the lawn.
All right, thank you. So any more questions, comments? If not, is there a motion? The motion would be to authorize the mayor to enter into a land use agreement with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, WDFW, for the joint maintenance and operation of the city of Cedar Wully access area in the vicinity of Riverfront Park. Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, and I did hear you too, Councilman Cock. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Last item on new business is the donation acceptance of the Lager Rodeo wood carving. This is ordinance 207824, and action is requested. Again, Mr. Bullock?
Thank you. So, yeah, so we're presenting an ordinance to accept a donation from the Lager Rodeo for wood carving of approximate value of $3,000. There's a picture included in your packet. It's a pretty dynamic statue of Uncle Sam. And really, it's a donation from Lager Rodeo, and we're... This is the action we need to accept the donation and put it on display at City Hall.
Any questions, comments, or motion?
I just wanted to thank them. It's an awesome gesture. They always provide some really awesome artwork, and this is another example of that, so very cool. Thank you, Lager Rodeo.
Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I talked to Dottie about this and thanked her already. I thought it was neat that they wanted to donate one.
Yeah, anyone else? Yeah, I have to agree, same. We have two other beautiful carvings out there. This will be a nice accent. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of the Lager Rodeo wood carving, ordinance 2078 TAC 24.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Lager Rodeo. Yeah, thank you, Bill. Next, we're going to be moving into executive session. This is a discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation. This falls under RCW 42301101I. And we will be in executive session for about 15 minutes. We'll be back at 8:15.
You've done a fine job.
Of what?
Everything.
Oh, you too. You are just fine, sir. No worries.
...
Okay, it is 8:15, and we have come back. There was no action taken. And with that, we are going to go into closed session, but before we do, I am going to adjourn this meeting. So we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.